Okay, good evening, everyone. I'd like to call to order and welcome you to the Lower Allen Township Board of Commissioners regular meeting of July fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-five. The time is six P. M., so we'll begin our meeting. Proof of publication is available for this meeting. We will begin the meeting with a moment of silence and we'll keep those impacted by the recent devastating floods in Texas in our thoughts. Okay, and please write for the pledge of allegiance. Okay, I again want to welcome everyone here on this rainy Monday evening. I am joined by Commissioner Schwartz, Commissioner Valone, Commissioner Brown, and Vice President Nagy, and I'm Jennifer Karen. I will begin the first order of business, which is the approval of the meeting minutes, beginning with the regular meeting of June ninth, two thousand and twenty-five.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion from Commissioner Brown, a second from Vice President Nagy. Are there any questions or comments? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Next, we'll take the regular meeting minutes of June twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-five.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion from Commissioner Schwartz, a second from Commissioner Brown. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Okay, so that takes us to audience participation. At this time, any item on the agenda or any business pertinent to the township can be raised. We do ask that all attendees sign in. I think, Mr. Sterling, do you have the sign-in sheet at the podium there? And when you come to the podium, if you'd just like to state your name and address for the record, and we do ask that you try to limit your discussions to five minutes. Is there anyone here who'd like to participate on any agenda item or anything relevant to the township? Yes, sir. And is this anything on the agenda, or is this something?
Uh, no.
Okay.
But it does.
It's pertinent to the township?
Deals with the township, yes.
Sure, certainly. Please just state your name and address for us.
Sure, it's John Nyheart. I'm at one oh-four U. Road up in Sheaford Crossing.
Okay, thank you.
First of all, thanks for the opportunity to state what I want to talk about, and it's chickens. I would invite anyone on the board who thought allowing chickens to be raised in a residential neighborhood, come to our property the next time we have a heat wave like we recently had. I can remember as a kid raising and feeding chickens at my grandmother's, and I don't have an issue with somebody if they have chickens. Understand, with eggs and all that, that's fine. My issue is what happens when they don't take care of those chickens and the resulting odor and other matters occur? If I have chickens in my yard and a member of the township comes up and says, "Look, you're in violation, here's a citation," it's my understanding, as the chicken owners, I would have thirty days to appeal that order or that decision. So if I wait three weeks to say, "Yeah, I think I'll appeal," we go three weeks with nothing being done in the process as far as cleaning up the mess. How long does the appeals process then take? Another couple of weeks? So conceivably, we could go half a summer with the issue of chicken waste. And what is my recourse if I'm one of the people affected? And I know I'm not the only one, because we were away last week and the neighbors behind us sent me a text message and said, "Who do we talk to? This is ridiculous." So I guess what I'm asking is, if I appeal as the chicken owners, what's the basis of my appeal? If a township official comes out and says, "Look, you have a problem, clean it up," what is my appeal? No, it doesn't stink? I mean, what's the point of people coming out then? So what I'm asking is, the appeal process, can that be changed? Can you amend that ordinance? Because thirty days is crazy. I mean, again, I would invite anybody, come up to my house. We had folks over, and I had a little five-year-old. My friend's grandson said, "Mr. Jack, why is your yard so stinky?" That's a five-year-old. So there obvious was a problem. Whether they were cited, I'm assuming they were, because when we got back from the shore, some changes were made to the chicken run where this issue is involved. My other point is, Ms. Davis could tell you, when she was Public Works Director, we have a swale behind the properties. With all this rain, where is all that material going? I have a good guess, but I'm not an expert. And again, to me, it just seems that process has to be changed, excuse me, whether it's you have three days to clean it up, five days, and if not, they go. Get rid of them. Again, I'm not disputing having chickens. I understand that. But why, as a neighbor, do I have to put up with that smell until a hearing or... You understand where I'm coming from, so?
Yes, yes, thank you.
I mean, what recourse do we have? I can go to the hearing, but you already have a zoning member or a codes officer who's going to go and say, "Yeah, it was a problem." So can that be in any way changed?
Okay, well, first, I think, thank you so much for coming tonight and voicing your concerns. We appreciate hearing from you. I don't know if Mr. Minor, I don't want to put either of you on the spot, because I don't know that you have our chicken ordinance in front of you, but can any of you speak to the appeal process and the mechanics for that, if this is something?
I can speak to it.
I don't think you have your mic. As long as your mic's there, I think that would be fine.
Okay, well, I can speak to it. Kind of being put on the spot quickly, it's, the foul ordinance is a part of our zoning ordinance. That is where the appeal process come from. So, I mean, we can certainly cite the property owner and try to have it, but they would be able to appeal to the zoning hearing board because it's part of the zoning ordinance.
Okay.
Well, that's my point. Can that be changed?
Has this problem been brought to your attention yet, or to the township's attention that you're aware of?
I'm sorry?
Has this area been brought to the township's attention yet that you're aware of?
Well, I believe you've been in contact with Marcus, correct?
Correct. As have other neighbors.
Okay.
And that was Marcus's, I mean, he is certainly trying to get it cleaned up and get it taken care of. There was probably a notice, I know there was a notice of violation to the property owner. However, the thirty days, they have that to basically appeal to the zoning hearing board.
I agree with Mr., you know, comments from Mr. Sweeney, but my only other comment would be, I don't know if there's something else that could be cited criminally with a summary, you know, with a district justice, and I'd have to look into that, because I think what Mr. Sweeney's saying is correct. And I think the thirty days is statutory from the MPC. I don't think it's something that we can vary by ordinance, but there may be something criminal that could be done with a summary offense. I'm not talking this. That would be the other recourse, but usually, I mean, that's a shame, because usually, the notice of violation, you know, the goal is not to find somebody, it's to try to get, you know, action within ten days, not thirty, but I agree. If it's a zoning matter, zoning appeals are thirty days from the determination of the zoning officer.
Well, and I will say, Mr. Brandt has been very patient, has come up and basically said, "This is a problem." But when I was told about the appeal process, again, what do I do for thirty days other than, you know, going to the neighbors? That's not happening.
It's present anywhere.
Well, I just wanted, I guess, translator for Mr. Minor, just to clarify, you're saying that the thirty days as part of the appeal process is not a township pick number, that is something that comes from the state zoning, so that the gentleman's aware that that's not a number we picked.
If it's a zoning matter, it's governed by the municipality's planning code. We can't make it longer or shorter. That's what's determined by the statute. I'm just wondering if there's another way to enforce it, and again, I don't know that you're going to get immediate results, even if you do a summary offense, but, you know, we can't, you know, that's not something the commissioners can alter. I mean, that is a statute.
Well, who here has a suggestion? I'm open to suggestions, because like I said, it's...
No, but I think the other thing, and again, I don't want to speak for the board or, you know, the director, but I'd like to look into it, because I really, you know, this is part of a permit process. I mean, if the person's not going to comply with the permit, that's another avenue that can be taken, that the permit can be revoked. I don't have any, and again, I don't know the particulars, I don't know the neighbor, but depending on the number of birds, I mean, you know, that may be something that can also be done, is that long-term, that if the person's not responsible, they don't deserve a permit.
So if it's criminal, do I call the police? I mean, they have better things to do.
No, no, and I'm not suggesting that they're going to handle nuisance anyway.
Right.
And I totally agree, it's not a crimes code matter, but I just, but I, you know, and again, I don't want to speak in generalities, but I have to, because I don't know the specifics of this case.
In terms of suggestions?
Yes, sir.
You know, I, again, I haven't looked back at the foul ordinance since we started the discussion and don't know it off the top of my head, so I couldn't give you additional suggestions on top of what you've already done, but I would say, I would suggest reaching out to the township, making a complaint as soon as possible so that we can get the process moving, and you seem to have done that, so...
Oh, no, the process, from what I understand, is underway.
Yes.
My point is thirty days.
Yeah.
What is my recourse? What do I do?
And Mr. Nyheart, if I could just clarify something.
Yes.
We didn't pass the chicken ordinance to have people have chickens, we passed the chicken ordinance to limit them.
So then you have an issue?
We had neighborhoods that were having a hundred chickens pop up at a home, and so we decided to do something about that.
Okay.
But to a degree, we have to, I mean, we don't have a choice but to follow the MPC, but I understand where you're coming from, and I appreciate what you're saying, but the way we have the ordinance is that if you do have more than, is it six, then they have to have a permit, and that permit can be revoked. So...
So if there is a violation, you can revoke it.
Correct, and then that would put a stop to it permanently. So unfortunately, you know, I don't have a solution to the thirty-day problem, because there's just not one right now that I can think of unless Solicitor Minor can come up with something there, but...
Again, the board can't alter the appeal period that's at with the MPC, but I don't know whether there is a matter of whether it's a criminal nuisance, and again, you know, I'd like to defer a little bit to the code staff, because I don't know how big the flock is regarding the permit, but again, that's another possibility. If there's too many birds and they exceed that permit limit, the revocation of the permit would be a long-term solution, because what the commissioner's saying is true. I mean, you know, the township can't regulate everything, and this is a situation where they can't prohibit keeping a foul, but obviously, you know, the regulation is permissible, and you want people to be responsible, and, you know, we hope everyone is, and the ordinance is relatively new, so we're learning at the same time you are.
So if it happens again, what do I do? Who do I call?
But again, I think you're contacting the right people.
Right.
I mean, you know, it's Mr. Sweeney's department or the code staff. I mean, that's the place to register your concerns.
Okay. All right, very good.
Yeah, and I think we can continue to look into it and circle back with you on this.
Very good, I appreciate it.
But thank you so much for coming tonight.
All right, thanks for your time.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
You're welcome. Tomorrow, if you'd like, call me tomorrow. Yeah, just make sure you signed in with the... He did? Okay, perfect. Okay, are there any other audience participation items? Okay, hearing none, we'll move on to the consent agenda. This is where any commissioner, staff member, anyone in attendance who would like to have an item on the consent agenda removed for further discussion can request so now. Is there a request for the removal of any of the items listed here on the consent agenda?
No objections, I make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
I have a motion from Commissioner Brown, a second from Vice President Nagy. Any questions or comments?
I would just like to make a comment, Madam President. Director Knoll, thank you again for initiating the credit card check register back quite a while ago, having that piece separated out and building that into our view into the finances. I think this is a good layer for the township as, you know, another way for the board to see some of these smaller bills that come through and we get that get paid. So thank you again for doing that, and it's good to see that on here.
Okay, any other comments or questions? Okay, thank you, Commissioner Valone, for your comment. I have a motion and a second. Any... I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero. The next item on the agenda are under Director Kron for Human Resources.
Thank you, good evening. First item up on the list, we should have made the last item for dramatic purposes, but it is the first item. Discussion and possible action moving Rebecca Davis, Township Manager in the Administration Department, from probationary status to regular full-time status. To my knowledge, she's fulfilled all of her obligations under probation, and it's to the board to make that decision.
So moved, with pleasure.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion from Vice President Nagy, a second from Commissioner Schwartz. Any other questions or comments? Okay, hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero, and thank you to Manager Davis for your exceptional six months here as manager. The next item?
Next item, discussion of possible action moving Barbara Arnold, Environmental Programs' Manager in the Public Works Department, from probationary status to regular full-time status effective July one, two thousand and twenty-five. Ms. Arnold has also fulfilled all of the obligations of her probationary period, and it's to the board to make that finalized.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion from Commissioner Brown, a second from Commissioner Valone. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five, zero, and we also thank Ms. Arnold for her good work in her new role. Next item, please.
Next up, moving Hannah Shearer from AEMT to full-time paramedic in the EMS Department effective July fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-five. It is a budgeted position. It's part of the Personnel Development Program in EMS. They send the AEMTs to school for paramedic. Once they've achieved their certification, then we come back here and we move them into the role of greater responsibility. So this is before the board to move Ms. Shearer to the next position as paramedic.
So moved.
Second.
Yeah, a lot of ties.
Yeah, a lot of ties. I have a motion from Vice President Nagy, a second from Commissioner Brown. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero, and congratulations to Hannah. Next item?
Adopting Resolution two thousand and twenty-five R. thirty-one, appointing Camden A. Roberts as a hybrid EMS PSO in EMS and Public Safety Departments effective July twenty-one, two thousand and twenty-five. This is also a budgeted position. This is actually finally replacing Frank Worth on the roster. Madam President, I actually have a quick question.
Sure.
Director Kern, I just noticed, the memo says effective July fifteenth, and the agenda and the resolution both say July twenty-first. Is it supposed to be tomorrow, or... It'll be July twenty-first, that's the first day you can actually start with us. Okay, perfect. All right, thank you.
Thank you for clarifying.
With that, I move to adopt Resolution two thousand and twenty-five dash R. thirty-one, appointing Camden A. Roberts as hybrid EMS PSO in the EMS and Public Safety Departments effective July twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-five.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion from Commissioner Schwartz, a second from Commissioner Valone. Any other questions or comments? Okay, hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero, and congratulations and welcome to Camden. Next item?
The last item is accepting the resignation of Ricardo Lopez, Information Technology Specialist in the Administration Department, effective July third, two thousand and twenty-five. He has returned from whence he came for personal reasons. He regretted that he had to leave here and spoke very highly of the township, but alas, he had to go.
Okay, thank you. Anyone willing to make the motion to accept his resignation?
I'll make that motion, Madam President.
Second.
I have a motion from Commissioner Valone, a second from Vice President Nagy. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Thank you, Director Kron.
Thank you.
Looks like you have one lonely item, Director Hall.
One lonely item, yes, ma'am. It's nine A. on the agenda. It's a memo to the board that's asking, February the twelfth, the board will recall that we ask to order a replacement for Unit Ambulance three seventy-four. Three hundred and fifty thousand was allocated in the twenty-five capital fund for that purchase, and the terms were that we anticipated delivery in twenty-six or, the way things are going, twenty-seven at the latest, but no funds needed to be expended until the chassis was delivered. At this point, we have not received the chassis. And in the interim, ambulance three seventy-four has experienced AC problems, and the ongoing weather has not been very helpful. When we're talking, you know, consistently eighty-plus feels like ninety degrees. There's regulation that requires that the back of an ambulance be no greater than eighty-four, or, no, I think it was eighty-four degrees, but it could be lower than that. It does not attend that. Charlie's here, if anybody has any fleet questions on that, and also Tony's here, if there's any questions with that, too, but it created a significant hardship, because most of the time that unit is out of service, can't be used, which puts the other two units frontline with high mileages, and the one unit actually has, has an oil leak issue. It's going to need to be taken out of service, so we look for a remedy for that problem. Staff located for another unit that Fund, P. Fund has, which is our vendor. They have a demo unit that's immediately available. It's a first-come, first-served basis, so the reason we're coming before the board tonight is because if we don't have them hold it with a commitment, then they put that back in the mix, and then we don't have a unit, and we're forced into looking at twenty-six, which is not really going to solve the problem. So what, we, there's a number of finance options for this. Leach is still looking at the best option for it, but we do have that three hundred and fifty. We did find out over the weekend that Fund for three seventy-four will give us a trade-in of twenty, around twenty thousand dollars, so that would go into it, and there's also fifteen thousand available, as we said in the memo, for the State Fire Commissioners grant that's not been allocated to anything specific. So going over budget is not an issue with this particular one for this year, so, and we've looked at, I know, the Finance Director's looking at lease-to-buy options and also trade-out purchase options available. So our request to the board basically is to seize this opportunity to tell Fund we will take that vehicle while Finance takes a look at reporting options. At least we could come back to the board at the next meeting and talk about what the choice is for those funding options. But because delivery of vehicles, still, if you place an order now, you're still talking two, just like fire equipment, two to three years until they would build another unit for us. So we'd like to, at this point, until we see what other options are available, keep the one that's on order, on order, because we have two units now that are, the one unit is ninety-two thousand miles, and the other unit has a hundred and five thousand miles, or a hundred thousand, a hundred and ten thousand, a hundred and five thousand miles. So those, both of those units are costly to run, and being able to solve this problem, at least the immediate problem, would be in thinking everybody's best interest. As before the board, to see if we can, you know, seize this demo for right now, at least make a commitment for it.
Okay, thank you. I'll open it up to discussion and questions from the commissioners.
Madam President, if I may, Director, and when I got them up, first of all, thanks for the memo. I get it, and I'm glad I know why Charlie's here, because I do have a couple of questions on it, because the first thing that came to mind when I read the memo was, geez, you know, if something happens to my air conditioning, I've got a lot of problems, I just have to do whatever it takes to get it fixed, or replace the vehicle, right? But in this case, I'm just wondering, and I do think it would be helpful, Madam President, if Charlie can, you know, maybe talk to this. I think that's why he's here. He knows that, he knows this inside out, because reading it, it seems to me like, if it's AC, you know, I don't know how much AC costs, we're talking, I mean, ten, twenty grand, maybe, I don't know, I have no idea, but my question is, is, if I, well, explain it this way, what happens if one of our ambulances getting, unfortunately, get into a crash, and then it's out of commission? I mean, what do we do? Is there a rental? And in this case, would we be able to rent one and then have the AC fixed properly, opposed to making the big expenditure now? And again, I'm saying that all under kind of just this conservative, you know, umbrella of thinking with this. I know there's more to it, because there has to be, because I trust our staff. So I would like to have some background on the AC and why there would be such a need to have it replaced, and what happens if we, one, just goes out of commission because it's wrecked?
I think that's a great question, and Charlie can speak to the design, but there's always been an issue with that box, mainly because the air conditioning unit is part of the chassis. Everything we have purchased since, that's a nine-year-old unit, and every unit we have purchased since the remedy that problem has a dedicated, you know, you see them in the front, if you take a look at the vehicle. Three seventy-four does not have that. It's chassis air conditioning. Charlie, you can probably explain it better.
Yeah, Mr. Reynolds, if you could come to the podium, please, thanks. Oh, sorry.
Yes, if I may, we think about your own vehicle, you got an AC compressor on the front. The amateurs themselves, what we're running right now, only has one compressor to run, the box in the back, which is twelve to fifteen foot long, big, in the sunbox, plus the cab itself, so there's one compressor trying to do both, so there is really no issue with the AC. The fact is, the matter is, the AC compressor cannot keep up with the hot temperatures, so that's why we have to put it down in the summer and the heat. And to stress your point, Commissioner Valone, it is a stressful time, and one goes down like that, we can't use it, and we're running two, and we got another go down, now we got to, maybe, in a worst-case scenario, is miss a call, and because we're running down, and it's just, it does get a stressful time to do that, but as far as the AC, one compressor trying to run two boxes, what they're doing now is putting AC, a dedicated AC unit right on the box, so now you can get that down to sixty degrees, sixty-five degrees in the box, and still have the AC up front at your liking with the driver. So we got a patient apartment AC and the chassis AC.
I get that, but I'm just curious, why can't it be fixed?
It's, we've tried. We've tried many times to get it down lower, and right now, as low as we can get it, as low we can go. We actually have found a company...
Okay, so you're saying the compressor or some major part of what's going to make that ambulance have the proper air, it's at the end of its life, is what you're saying?
That's what I'm saying.
Okay, I understand.
Yep.
And regardless of what, you know, parts or whatever are out there that somebody can fix it?
We can spend a couple thousand dollars and put AC compressors on, do everything else we can to it, we're still not going to get it down to what we desire by the standards.
Now, do those units, you know, go obsolete as well, like with parts?
The AC compressors?
Yeah, like, I mean, any parts on, that would be related to the AC unit?
Right now, what that machine is running is the old, in layman's terms, are different refrigerant they use.
The refrigerant.
It's an older machine.
That's the older one.
Yeah, so we're going to go to the newer machine, now you're really talking some money to even update the AC.
Yeah, we had that issue with cars years ago in that transition.
Correct.
Okay. Thanks for the explanation, because I think we all needed to maybe hear that, at least I did for sure.
Yeah.
To hear, you know, what that issue was, because it didn't seem too major to me, but I understand.
Yep.
Okay, any other questions for Mr. Reynolds, while he's at the podium, or in general?
I had for Director Hall. So this is a budgeted item, correct?
It is. There's three hundred and fifty thousand currently in the capital budget.
And so my only question then would be, the ambulance that we have ordered that's scheduled for delivery in two thousand and twenty-six, how long do we have to cancel that before we have a penalty?
We could actually cancel it at any time.
Okay.
So that was probably was part of what came before the board when you approved ordering it.
Okay.
So it could be.
I just couldn't remember the details behind that. I think it was about almost a year ago, right? That that all came to be. I mean, that's my only question, just, you know, this, it is a budgeted item. To me, it seems a little bit that this unit, a little bit of a simple answer, in my mind at least. But I'm curious as to, you know, what the solution will be moving forward for this other unit, whether it be trade one of our units in or, and how does that affect the budget next year? You know, we just had the, the exception, I'll say, to our, to our budget role for EMS on the last budget and we just don't want to start making it a habit.
Some of that will depend upon finance options, too. There's three hundred fifty thousand capital, but there's, there is a, I think Alicia's looking at lease options as well, which would be significantly less than what's budgeted.
Yeah, well, part of what was budgeted, that was approved with this past budget, is the capital expenditure and some type of financing. That was all approved in the 2025 budget. So, and we have several options. The pit loans are available. They generally go to construction items first as a priority, but they do offer it for equipment and things like that. The fund that they're buying it from has a leasing setup that isn't terrible. It's about a percentage higher than what the pit loan would be, but then there's other leasing companies as well that I've requested information from.
And I guess that would be my, on the finance side, questions. What would be the advantage to leasing versus if we've already made the capital outlay for this and it's budgeted? I guess in my head, kind of simple finance terms, why would we want to pay the interest and give someone else a cut of the slice of the money if we've outlaid this money to not just buy it outright?
Well, we budgeted the capital expenditure.
Okay.
But in order to offset in the budget to make it clear out, we budgeted the financing for it.
Okay.
So that's, we could take the monies, we could actually do it by the funds that we have, but then we would have to do a budget amendment.
Okay.
For another capital expenditure of that magnitude. But this will even out what we would spend, so we'd be able to budget and even amount every single year for five years.
Okay. And then I have a follow-up question for Mr. Reynolds on, so being that, you know, they're ambulances, but they're Ford heavy-duty chassis, you know, they're all no different than what you guys are running for some of your equipment up there. What is the life cycle on chassis and engines like this? Because we've got, this one, we've kind of talked about, the AC is, is its Achilles' heel and that's its own issue, but, you know, we're at 2020 and I forget, 2019 or 2021 for the other one, and they're both pushing hundred thousand miles. What is the life cycle? What do you expect out of heavy equipment like that, heavy diesel engines?
Well, again, I would say we're pushing that limit right now for that because it is constantly on the run like that. But I'm saying between ten to fifteen years, and we're all but there now.
Okay. Thank you.
Especially the one we're talking about.
Yeah.
That is getting, that's the issue. You know, that's not really a heavy-duty chassis.
I'd say it's a lighter duty four fifty.
It's a lighter duty chassis, correct, the one we're talking about.
But, but the other two units, you think ten?
That's, it could.
Sure, sure.
It depends, you know, anything, there's variables in anything like that.
Yeah, for sure.
To what happens. We could, we could go tomorrow and we might have a catastrophe with an engine, it just, it depends. Again, they're, they're being driven every day versus our trucks on the road up at the shop, you know, they're just, they get used whenever we use them, but the ambulances are all on the road. But those trucks are heavier duty or framed than what we're talking about, this particular ambulance.
Okay, any other questions? Director Hall, unless anybody has any, I was just going to ask, so can you just sort of clarify, so if we were, if the board were to authorize the replacement tonight, what are the next steps then? So we would then hear about the financing options at an upcoming meeting?
I think that's the next meeting we would, the 28th, we would probably come, that's, you know, Leash can have it put together by then.
Okay, so then the board, the board would have to decide how we wanted to finance it or pay for it? And then when it came time later this year, when we were in the budgeting process, we would, the board would then have to decide what to do with the ambulance that is on hold or still being constructed?
Yes, because there's, there's a number of things to take a look at and we would bring that forth as a part of that process. We're putting, we put eighteen thousand, a little over eighteen and a half thousand miles on the, on ambulance one seventy-four on an average. It's five years old. The other ambulance is six years old and that one has about sixteen thousand eight hundred miles on it per year as well. With, and that's a hundred thousand miles as of June on that ambulance. So both of them are aging and both of them are used very heavily. And most of the time, five to seven years is what we look at before we go to a replacement. These have been held up, these have held up very, very well, but we have some decisions to make as to what we do from a strategic planning perspective into the future.
Right. So I just want to clarify, authorizing the replacement tonight does not lock us into moving forward with the other vehicle that's on hold?
It does not.
And, and as Commissioner Brown raised, there's no penalty in canceling that for us?
Correct.
Great, so this, if I understand this correctly, Madam President, authorizing this tonight is basically just kind of business as usual, so to speak, as far as getting, from a budgeting standpoint, just a matter of how we're going to pay for it.
Right.
Like what, how, what?
Which will be at an upcoming meeting.
There are, according to the vendor, there are two firms that are looking at it now. So he's held off till tonight to make a decision not to release it to them and they keep it for our use if we so choose to do that. If we don't, the fear is that it just goes and then, then we don't know what we're going to do.
Okay.
So, but it does, and then we can, we can determine financing downrange when they have that figured out. It just holds it. It's putting a lock on it, so, so we don't lose it.
Understood.
And I guess to a follow-up to President Karen's point, and it sounds like you guys are already working on this kind of between finance, public safety and fleet, but essentially a recommendation and a plan moving forward of what's, I would say, both economical and wise from, from use standpoint of, of what we currently have, that way to give us a little better downrange planning of what, what we need to do.
Right.
As we enter budget season for the, you know, the one that's, I kind of keep calling out in cyberspace, it's just sitting there theoretically existing till?
There's always been a lot of research and discussion on that, but we're not ready to come forward with that plan yet.
Okay.
But when we're doing the budget, that would be the time when you would bring all that information to us for consideration? Sorry.
I was just going to say, if we're, if we can anticipate five to seven years per unit and we're looking at three working units, I guess we would have to be planning on basically a new ambulance every other year, is how we would have to be cycling this out. And then, you know, again, I'll have more questions when the budget times comes, but it's like, are we to a point where we can take at least one of these units and start conserving it a little bit more to get to the point where we can get on this two-year cycle versus, you know, ordering a bunch of ambulances?
Well, we, we could if, if we take this one now. Now, the problem is the other two, the frontline units are one year apart.
Right.
So we have to somehow come up with a strategy to kind of broaden that a little bit, whatever that ends up being.
Right.
Right now, they're taking, because we haven't been able, and this isn't a new problem, when it gets hot like this, it's been a consistent problem since we've had the brunt, which is what this model is, it's a gas-operated unit with, with a single air conditioner off the chassis. This is nothing new. This is every year we've been doing this. And what then happens is the other two units take the brunt. It's the reason why we ordered those units with separate box air conditioning units five, six years ago.
I'm just thinking, if we don't start figuring out a way to get on a cycle, we're going to be at a point where we're ordering three at a time.
Correct.
And I don't think anybody wants that, so.
No, not at the current, not at the current cost of handling it in the near future.
And to even the time cycle, I would also, you know, say input from Mr. Reynolds on life cycling, you know, what engine or which units are going for how, I'm sure there's different logic on use your older ones to some extent, or once they're older, throw them in the back, but then, then their breakdowns go up and I, I don't know what's the right answer, but I presume you do, or there's some, some info out there of what's the best way to cycle them correctly so that we're getting the most out of every, every mile and every year that we own them.
So it sounds like you have the board's interest for the budget sessions in terms of what information we're looking for. Perfect.
If I may.
Yeah.
So Manager Davis, I'm sure you've already been thinking about your plan of attack of when we start budgeting and all of that this year. I'll just remind you, my colleagues up here and others, that usually when that budget season hits, it hits hard quickly and we kind of get, we try to get through it the best we can, we're coming in on off weeks. It sounds like there's already some talk about what might, what that future might be and what that plan might be for down the road. It sounds to me that way.
Yeah.
And, and I would just say, I would like to maybe just count on you, Manager Davis, maybe just give us some sort of update from time to time as those early budget talks happen, because this is going to be, it sounds like it's going to be a big-ticket item, not just for this purchase or the next one, but down the road of how we would plan. And coupled perhaps with Director Noel, I know you're busy keeping everything going and you're doing a great job, maybe starting to see some reflections of what our long-term, you know, we had talked about what our long-term outlet is, where these expenditures and revenues start to collide or whatever, however that term is, and accounting for the township, looking in our five and 10-year plans, perhaps before we get into budget, so that we can kind of be prepared when that does hit, that maybe this and maybe some other big-ticket things that'll be coming, that we're saying essentially, I think, what I'm hearing some other times, we've got the money, you know, we've got a good fund balance and, you know, we often say, well, maybe it's a big fund balance and we should spend it on things. I just think it would be nice to see that bigger picture as we start to make these decisions coming into the budget. And so maybe some updates prior to us getting budget started would be helpful.
Yeah, absolutely. Commissioner Valone, thank you for that comment. I just want to let you know, the finance committee is meeting at the end of July. We preliminary, preliminarily discussed at our last meeting, budget sessions with small groups and actually, actually breaking out into some workshop sessions so that you see that document more than just once at a public meeting and are part of that working document. And then we also are bringing forth a fiscal draft policy that Director Noel will be working on to the July 31st meeting, so we can update the board subsequently afterwards.
Music to my ears, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, all right, back to the action item at hand here for the replacement of ambulance three seventy-four. Is anyone inclined to make a motion for that?
I would make that motion, Madam President.
Second.
I have a motion from Commissioner Valone and a second from Vice President Nagy. Any questions or comments? Okay, hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero and thank you so much for all the information you provided to us.
Thank you all.
Okay, next section of our agenda is community and economic development. We'll turn to Director Sweeney, I think you have an update and also an action item for us. And you're coming to the podium.
I have to.
Oh.
Mr. Sterling says I have to come.
Oh, okay. Good job.
So I can be, so I can be on camera.
Oh, okay, all right, well, thank you.
Okay, real quick tonight, just two items under community and economic development. The first item is just a zoning hearing board update. There was no zoning hearing board meeting last month. We have not yet received any applications and don't really anticipate any applications, so there likely will not be an August meeting either at this point.
Okay, thank you for that update.
The second item for discussion and possible action, authorizing staff to advertise for two alternate planning commission members. I'll give you a little background on this. So, so we currently have a seven-member planning commission. And especially recently, we've been having a little bit of trouble getting a quorum. Last, last month, we had to cancel our meeting. We had three plans on the agenda and unfortunately had to cancel the meeting. This month for July, we do thankfully, at this point, we'll be, tomorrow, we'll be having a meeting, but we had four people, we have four members attending, so we've just now gotten our quorum. So just to try to offset that, we're hoping to perhaps get advertised for two alternate members. That way, just in case, we can actually hold, have a quorum and hold a meeting. We see it as a benefit, obviously, to the board to have a planning commission and vet some things at the planning commission level. We'd hate to have a quorum or not have a quorum for several months and, and have a developer say, no, I'm, I want to get to the board and, you know, not have things vetted at a planning commission meeting. So that's really, that's really the, the context why we are asking to, for authorization to advertise for two members. One thing I would also say, what I'd like as well, what we would like is to return to a five-member board as opposed to the seven. Having the seven, first off, it's tougher and tougher to get volunteers. So it's just, I mean, we had an empty seat for quite a while to where we were able to fill it with Katie. But you have a, you have a seven-member board, you're already down one seat, you still have to have a quorum of four. So in order, in order to go back to five with two alternates, I think, would probably give us our best chances, five, we have a quorum of three and two alternates, probably give us our best chances to be able to hold a quorum. Or have a quorum for a meeting.
Okay, thank you, Director Sweeney. I just have a quick question in terms of the authorization to reduce the number, is that included in tonight's action?
It's not.
Is that being requested by?
But I will say, you know, the, according to the lower alan code, your planning commission is five, so that's really not going to change. We're going to get back, and I'm, and I don't know the history of that, because I'm trying to figure out when we went to seven and it wasn't changed. So I'd rather have your planning commission, I think you decide what it should be, but you're really not making that change. I think what, what's going to happen is you find members that attend more frequently or you have people that, that don't attend are going to step back to that alternate role, but we do need your permission to do this. And I think you're still going to, you still need some kind of resolution to appoint whenever we do that.
Okay.
But right now, you're, the, the way the code is written, that ordinance authorized the planning commission of five.
Okay, so if we authorize the staff to advertise tonight, what's the timeframe for actually having those vacant, or these alternates filled?
Well, we would, I think we would first have to have the, have the ordinance change, correct, before we'd actually have the alternates?
No, you really don't, I mean, I was saying, we really don't need an ordinance change because it's, it authorizes five members.
But two alternates.
The only thing that we, yeah, I'm sorry, if, if we don't have, we don't have authorization for that, so that would be the way the ordinance would be written. But in other words, so, yeah, so I guess what we're really looking for is an authorization for an ordinance to, to, to appoint two alternates. You don't have that now, so in other words, you would have five and the, but two of those folks would be alternates. So that is a change, I'm sorry.
I see, I see, okay. So the action item would be to authorize an ordinance, authorize, do we need to advertise to the ordinance?
Right.
Okay, so authorizing advertisement of an ordinance which would appoint the two alternates to the planning commission?
Correct, I'm sorry.
Okay, perfect, all right. Okay, are there any questions for Director Sweeney or Solicitor Minor?
Solicitor Minor, is it, is it possible to make these two alternates, like discussion alternates? The reason I'm saying that is I'm just thinking this as practice, how would it work out, right? So if you're not getting called that often to be an alternate, you're sitting home, maybe you're not coming, but if there was an opportunity for them to come and be part of discussion, but not, of course, vote, I mean, I, I think that would be helpful in that we make that almost a, not mandatory, because they're volunteers, but I mean, a part of the description of what the duties are.
Oh, no. And that's perfectly okay. In fact, one of the things that I like about your current zoning board is your alternate attends all the meetings.
Yeah, because they should be up to speed.
Right.
Especially if you have a preliminary plan come in and then the next cycle, there's the plan, and then, you know, that person's not up to speed. And I think it should be part of a requirement in the just description, too.
No, no, I, I hope they, I hope they participate because that's the, really, the, what you want to have happen is that person becomes educated over time and, and you want them to move into that seat because they like doing that. And I think that's, that the national succession with your zoning hearing board is, is that way, because that particular member, even though he doesn't vote, he asks some very good questions. And I think he, I think he really contributes to the discussion. And, and we, you know, and as, as the director said, it's tougher and tougher to get volunteers. We, we do want people to participate and, and the fact that we have people now that are not participating creates this problem, but we certainly want to continue to find people to do that. And yes, they're always welcome to attend. In fact, I think that's what the director is saying is, we'd like, we'd like them to attend now so we have a quorum.
Right. Great, thank you.
To answer that question as well, staff, we fully intend to, uh, they will be treated, uh, the alternates will be treated as members. Uh, they will get the packets. Uh, they will be encouraged to attend, uh, certainly encouraged to participate, obviously, to the, to the extent that they can. Um, by all means, we would, we would want that. We would encourage that.
Okay, any other questions?
If, if no further discussion, uh, Madam President, I'll move that, uh, we authorize staff to advertise, um, an ordinance for the addition of two alternate planning commission members.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion from Commissioner Schwartz, a second from Commissioner Valone. Any questions or comments? Okay, hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, five to zero, and thank you for bringing that to our attention. Okay, Director Powell, you just have a couple items for tonight, right?
Yeah. Put on your marathon shoes.
I'm going to turn my mic off.
Uh, the first item on the agenda tonight is for discussion, possible action. This is for approving the contract with the Co-Stars vendor to reconstruct the Highland Tennis Court for $75,950. I put a memo together that outlined how we've, um, funded this project, um, with funds, the park fee in lieu of, and some grants. Um, originally after our last meeting, I went and I received two quotes from Co-Stars vendors. And we negotiated back and forth with what, um, could be done by our own internal staff. And that's, um, that's kind of landed us where we're at with them doing the work for the amount listed. Um, and then staff, our own public works, um, staff will be doing the rest of the work. So, um, that's all outlined in that memo for you, but if you have any questions, I can answer those.
Okay, yes, thank you for your thorough memo. Are there any questions from the commissioners about this item?
Madam President, if there's no questions or any further comments, I would make a motion to approve the contract with a Co-Stars vendor, uh, to reconstruct the Highland Park Tennis Court in the amount of $75,950.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion from Commissioner Valone, a second from Commissioner Brown. Any questions or comments on this item? Okay, hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, five to zero. And I just want to add, I, I appreciate the schematic that you included in our packet. So it was helpful as a reference. So thank you for that.
Uh, the second un- item on the agenda for discussion and possible action, this is for renewing the municipal winter agreement with the PA Department of Transportation for the 2025, 2026 winter maintenance season. Um, last year, um, it was approved to enter a five-year agreement with PennDOT uh, for winter maintenance on certain PennDOT-owned roads within the township. Um, every year we have to re-sign that, um, and this is just to, um, add on 2% to the, the base fee from that original contract. So this is just a yearly routine, that, routine, uh, agreement that we have to sign with them.
Okay, and I assume Solicitor Minor, you've reviewed the agreement?
Yes.
And it's standard?
Madam President.
Okay, are there any questions for Director Powell?
If none, I'll make, go ahead. If none, Madam President, I'll make the motion.
Okay, I have a motion from Vice President Nagy, a second from Commissioner Valone. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries, five to zero. Next item C, please.
Uh, third item for discussion and possible action, this is for awarding the Carlisle Road Signal Improvement Project to Bruce Merrily's Electric Company, the lowest responsible bidder at $296,976. In the packet, I did include a memo from our traffic engineer Bowman, um, which outlined the, um, the bid results from this project. Um, and then it was also reviewed by Solicitor Minor as well, um, and he agreed with their, um, determination that it should be awarded as such.
Okay, thank you. Yes, you, um, did include that information about the bids received on July 10th. Uh, are there any questions for Director Powell about the lowest bidder?
Madam President, if there's no other questions or comments, I would make a motion to award the Carlisle Road Signal Improvement Project to Bruce Merrily's Electric Company. Uh, they are the lowest responsible bidder at $296,000, uh, excuse me,
Second.
Okay, I have a motion from Commissioner Valone and a second from Commissioner Schwartz. Any questions or comments? Okay, hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, five to zero. Okay, item D, please.
Item D is for discussion, possible action. This is for approving the purchase of an upgrade to the CMMS software for $19,357.81. This is a budgeted item and this is just the software that, um, our facilities and fleet departments use for their work order tracking. Um, the old, the old software is from 2017 or 2018. It's out of date and they will not be making any more maintenance upgrades to that. So it's, it's time to, it's time to make the upgrade.
Okay, great, thank you. Any questions on this item?
Madam President, I'll make the motion.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion from Commissioner Brown, a second from Commissioner Valone. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, five to zero. You're on a roll here, so.
Let's keep going.
Yep.
Item E for discussion, possible action, this is authorizing staff to make an emergency stormwater drainage pipe replacement on Green Lane Drive for approximately $25,000. And this will be paid for, paid for from the stormwater fund. And again, I outlined a memo of the issue of a stormwater pipe that was rotted out and we just need to make the replacement now rather than run into issues and have to replace it later.
Okay, thank you. Any questions on this item?
Um, the only question I just had was on, being that it would come out a stormwater fund and we're making the decision though, um, updating the stormwater board.
Yeah, we will put this on the next agenda for their approval as well.
Perfect, thank you.
Uh, other than that, I have, uh, no other questions, Madam President. Would be happy to make a motion to approve the emergency stormwater drainage pipe repair and replacement at Green Lane Drive for approximately $25,000.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion from Vice President Nagy and a second from Commissioner Brown. Um, I just had one quick question to clarify, Solicitor Minor, this, um, did not need to be rebid to EK Services, correct?
And I guess I'd take a little exception. It's, it's not an emergency in the sense that there's a declared emergency, but, but you're, again, the way that, that the director's constructed this, you're well under the bid limit.
Okay, just wanted to clarify that for the record for us, yeah. Okay, great. So we have a motion and a second. Um, any questions or comments? Okay, hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, five to zero. Okay, bring us home with this last one.
And the last one, item F, uh, for discussion, possible action, this is authorizing staff to prepare and advertise bid specifications for the Creekwood, uh, Creekwood Park Boat Launch Project. And again, outlined a memo. Um, we received an estimate for, um, from R2 for the amount listed in the memo and we have $150,000, um, from a DCNR grant that will aid us in, in paying for the construction.
That's great.
Great.
Okay, any questions from the commissioners?
If there are no questions, uh, Madam President, or any other discussion, I'd make a motion authorizing staff to prepare and advertise uh, bid specs, uh, specifications for the Creekwood Park Boat Launch Project.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion from Commissioner Valone and a second from Peedy Meeny, my name, from Commissioner Schwartz. Um, any questions or comments? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, five, zero, and you have been very busy and we appreciate all of your hard work. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, next, Director Knoll for Finance.
Thank you, Madam President. Uh, the first item on the agenda is for discussion and possible action, approving a letter to Representative Delosier and Cutts, expe- um, expressing our support for the proposed legislation, which would enable municipalities to increase their local services tax or the LST tax up to $156 per year. Um, this follows the recommendation of the Pennsylvania Municipal League. I did attend their webinar uh, to watch for the two representatives that had put the legislation into action. And this is actually a very helpful item. We do, we, we took the standard letter that they sent us, but we did add a section where we state that we currently aren't seeking to increase it here in Lower Allen Township. But it is good legislation for any municipality who may need this. Um, it could come into play that down the road, we might also need this. The LST funds do go towards infrastructure like roads, and they also go towards emergency services like the fire or the ambulance.
Okay, great, thank you. And, and just to clarify and reiterate, uh, what Director Knoll just said. So we would be approving a draft letter to Representative Delosier and Representative Cutts. And as she indicated very eloquently already, but again, I'll reiterate it for the record, it's just, there's a sentence in the letter from the commissioner stating that currently Lower Allen Township is not seeking to increase our LST through the passage of the proposed legislation, but recognizes that having the option to increase, increase the LST could be a benefit to other municipalities within the Commonwealth. So just wanted to clarify that and, and the real purpose of the letter that we'd be providing. Um, is there anything additional or any questions for her?
I, I had a quick question. Um, I, I glanced over this, the first part of the letter initially, when I initially read it. And looking at it again, I, I think that I would like to suggest a change to the first sentence. Um, basically, I, I know that this is language that we got from PML, right?
Yes.
It, but, uh, the, the way that it's phrased currently, it makes it sound as though the representatives are being asked to increase the tax. Um, it, because it says, "We are writing to request your support for increasing the local service, services tax." Which is actually not what we're asking of them. Um, so I was going to suggest changing that to, "We are writing to request your support for authorizing municipalities to, uh, increase their local services tax if they deem it appropriate," something to that effect. Um...
Maybe something like, "Have the option of increasing."
Yeah, just, just to make it clear, they're, they're authorizing us to increase it by a certain amount. Um, they're not the ones increasing the tax. It just sort of sets off, even though we clarify further down, um, I think it just gets off on the wrong foot, um, by making it sound as though they're, they're being asked to raise the tax. Even though it's, if, if they read the bill, it's clearly not what they're, they would be doing by voting in favor of it, so. That would be my only recommendation. Otherwise, I think the, the letter does what it's meant to do.
Sure. I think that's a helpful clarification.
And Madam President, so, uh, two minutes ago, when this came up, um, and we didn't have the minute, the minutes, we did two sets of minutes tonight. And we didn't have the minutes from, so I wasn't reminded then, but as I was going through those set of minutes from that prior meeting, I was reminded that I had, uh, told the board I would give an update on the, um, the, the conversations at PSATC, this executive committee meeting that I had attended after we had that initial discussion and that I would bring it up. Um, the, the interesting comment, the, first of all, i- it's about the same, the conversation was all about the same that, that we had. But there are municipalities, first-class townships that are really looking for this anyway. Um, but of course, this applies to a- all across the state, all municipalities, the, this proposed legislation. But when I brought the piece in about, you know, we, we would give a letter potentially, you know, we talked about giving a letter potentially with the language of the opt, emphasizing the opt-in, opt-out. Our secretariat, who does our lobbying, Amy from PML, she's, she just looked at me and said, "Well, that's a no-brainer." She goes, "All the municipal organizations across the state, for the most part, any legislation, they want that piece in there, no matter what it is." And I know like the radar thing's been going back and forth, but even stuff like that has always made it into legislation to, to be able to give the municipalities as much options, as many options as possible on these type of things. So I just wanted to update the board on that, Madam President.
Okay, thank you.
Which I didn't get to do at the last meeting because frankly, I forgot.
Okay. Well, thank you for bringing that to our attention tonight. Okay, any other questions or comments on the approval of the letter?
Uh, Madam President, I would make a motion to approve the township's letter, uh, making note of Commissioner Schwartz's changes to the Representatives Delosier and Cutts expressing, expressing support for proposed legislation enabling municipalities to increase the LST if necessary.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion from Commissioner Brown, a second from Commissioner Schwartz. Any other questions or comments? Okay, hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, five to zero. Okay, then you have a budget item discussion.
Yes, and the next thing I have on the agenda, I did put a memo in the packet, um, at the Finance Committee. We were discussing projects. Um, there is some excess funds in the general fund for things that had been budgeted in previous years. Projects that either weren't done or projects that were, received grants or other funding items. So we actually have an excess of monies in the general fund that amount to about $813,652. So we were looking at some items in the Finance Committee and I listed those. We have things like the servers and the firewalls, um, the wifi and other IT items. That, that is an estimate of about what it will cost, so that could be a little bit more. Hopefully, it'll be a little bit less, but that's still kind of an unknown. We were looking at doing the enclosure in the front of the, the building at the front desk. That would take the place of the current gate that gets pulled across. It would actually be a permanent structure so that there would be a doorway to come in and out. So then, um, the front desk would be a little more protected. It can be, we can do just the storefront or there is the bulletproof glass option. So that's why you see the two different prices there. The ADA entrance for the push button here at the building, at the front doors, uh, just to make things easier for those who would need that. The camera installation, uh, supplies for the various locations that we've already authorized these cameras. So there's, um, the facilities, personnel has said that we need different things, poles, mounting equipment, things like that. Um, website upgrades, and that would include the interactive software for making the reservations on the barns and pavilions. The Carlisle Road signal upgrade, anything that was over what we budgeted and that's, um, we're figuring about $125,000 there. The fire and EMS pager system, which is, uh, through the county's paging, uh, setup. This would be an upgrade so that they are on the newest county public safety paging system. The ca- we would like to put cameras here at the municipal service center in the rear parking and impound area out back uh, to monitor to make sure of the cars back there, the impound area. We do have leaks and some other problems on the second floor roof, so we'd be doing repairs there. The signal, the traffic signal compliance study, which would help us to receive, uh, grants. It would also go through and tell us, um, if we are in compliance with the permit from PennDOT. And then the Prism IPX system, which would be an upgrade to the current alerting system in the fire department and emergency services. So all of those items, um, together would come out, would, um, total be $519,050. If we don't do the bulletproof glass, it would be $429,050. So in total with the budget, so the current total expenditures of the budget are $20,448,988. It would increase it to $21,332,278. This also would include the fee in lieu items that we had discussed and approved at the last board meeting. So if I put together a budget amendment for the next board meeting to be approved, that you would be looking at all of those items across the board against their expenditure items. And the monies that are coming from, so it's less than a 10% increase in what we have for expenditures. And the additional monies would be the, the $799,695 for the fee in lieu. And then this $519,000, if that's what we agree to, out of the $813,000.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for putting together the memo for us too, which basically summarized all these projects and the estimated cost that the Finance Committee had developed. So thank you for doing a great job leading the charge with the Finance Committee, um, putting this information together for us. So I'll just turn it to the commissioners if there's questions on these items. And I think the next step, I know it just says discussion, but are you looking for us to authorize the preparation of the budget amendment based on our discussions tonight?
Yes, the approval to, yes, move forward and make the amendment that...
I'd, I'd say that, uh, with this information, I, I can let it marinate for a couple of weeks and will, I think that we would be prepared to make a decision on that next time around. So it, it is great to have all this information on hand. Um, if there's no further discussion, um, I would move to authorize staff to, um, prepare the, uh, budget amendment as outlined in Director Knoll's, uh, July 10th memo.
Okay, thank you.
I'll second, but I have a couple of questions.
Sure.
As far as, because kind of being that it's a big grouping, in, obviously, you said, and I, we understand that overages happen, how do we account for overages if, you know, we adjust this? So say we agree to this, but then, obviously, like you said, the IT stuff, we find out that's going up. Is the bottom line here, would it be no greater than that number? So then things further down on the list would get cut to compensate? Or how do we, how do we adjust for that, then, if we start to have some overages within this kind of sub-list?
If we would start to have any type of overages, we would probably look to budget those things for next year.
Okay.
And try to postpone what we could in doing.
So in the end, it's more, we would say this number, essentially, we're authorizing with the amendment when that comes up, spending no greater than that number, and try to check off as many of the things on this list as possible?
Correct.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you, Madam President.
Any other questions for Director Noel? Okay, we have a motion from Commissioner Schwartz and a second from Vice President Nagy. If there's no other questions, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Director Noel. Manager Davis.
Thank you, Madam President. I have one item on the agenda this evening. This is for discussion and possible action. This is for our RTP projects that are moving forward finally with PennDOT. We have two locations. This is at Eighteenth Street and Hummel. We are putting in pedestrian, increased pedestrian walkways, push buttons, and accessibility with handicap accessible ramps. And then our other location is at Wasp Park and Royal. We are putting in RRFBs there, so that there will be actually a controlled crosswalk and light it, lit crosswalk for pedestrians and any type of people trying to get into Wasp Park. So both of those projects, we would need to enter into a sidewalk maintenance agreement for those with PennDOT. Solicitor Minor has reviewed this maintenance agreement and concurs it's in good order. So I'm just looking for if you have any questions tonight, and if not, and are so inclined to approve moving forward with signing this agreement. I am the authorized signer. We provide, signed a resolution that the manager would be the authorized signer of any RTP projects.
I just had one quick question.
Yes.
Could you just, for the public, just elaborate what that acronym was that you said, that you were installing?
Regional Transportation Plan, am I correct? The RTP?
Yeah.
Yeah.
RFP.
So...
Rectangular Rapid Flashing Beacons or Rectang...
Oh, okay.
Yep. So there are some on Carlisle Road. If you travel towards Carlisle Road, you see the ones near the school, you push button and they blink. So those are two, or did I answer your question?
Yes, yeah, I just wanted to clarify what the acronym stood for.
Yes.
For the record. Okay, any questions for Manager Davis, other than my silly question?
If no other questions, I'll make a motion to approve the township entering into a sidewalk maintenance agreement with PennDOT for the RTP projects.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion from Commissioner Brown, a second from Commissioner Malone. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Thank you, Manager Davis.
Thank you.
Okay, and at this time, we will begin Commissioner reports, but I will actually pause for a moment, just to make sure that there's no staff or directors or captains that have anything to bring to the attention for the good of the order tonight. Okay, hearing none, we'll move to Commissioner reports and begin with Commissioner Schwartz.
Thank you, Madam President. I'll try to be very brief. Happy Independence Day to everybody. And wanted to thank everybody's indulgence for the suggestions on the letter to Representatives Delosier and Cutts. I usually like to send things like that ahead of the meeting, so that changes can be made, but it was something that I noticed just now. So I appreciate your patience. I also finally wanted to recognize something that President Karen mentioned at the beginning of the meeting, the flooding in Texas and the scores of people who lost their lives as a result. I just wanted to express condolences and, you know, the profound sorrow that we're probably all feeling about that situation. And just wanted to express that I'm incredibly thankful to live in a township, a county, and a Commonwealth that frankly puts public safety and well-being of residents ahead of politics. And that's all I'll say about that. Thank you.
Commissioner Brown?
Thank you, Madam President. First off, I just, the Lisburn Fire Company Festival is coming up every year, as most of us know. It's an event that's over seventy-five years old, and there's a lot of good things going on between August sixth and August ninth. That's a Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, and Saturday evenings. A lot of activity going on, but more importantly, if anyone's interested in volunteering, just contact, you know, the folks over at the fire company, Mary Allen, Brian Klein, folks like that. They can steer you in the right direction. I'm sure I'll see many of the commissioners out. We've been doing our usual thing, you know, in the dining room, a lot of us. So that ought to be, hopefully, a productive event for Lisburn, and there are just such hard workers out there putting that program together. I just want to, I've been getting a lot of emails on the commissioner emails that go to everybody when somebody responds. It seems like a lot of them I'm clicking on now really aren't. They're either in another language that I don't understand, or they're in some sort of computer code, or, you know, they're trying to sell me on something bad. So I don't know if this is happening with everybody, and if that stuff just somehow gets filtered out. But it's not like going to spam. And so I just wanted to point that out. And with that, because there's so much clutter sometimes in the emails, I just wanted to make sure President Karen, maybe Vice President Nagy, and Manager Davis, and whoever else, are with the transition from a lot of stuff, you know, we transitioned, a lot of people sending me things, and then we had to kind of, are we pretty much up to speed with things, do you think? Or is there anything hanging that might have come to me that I might have missed?
I don't think you've missed anything, Commissioner Malone. I just think you may still receive a few grant communications since you were designated.
And if I get them off forward, yep.
Thank you.
But there's nothing hanging that you guys, okay, good. I just wanted to make sure that we're caught up with that. Sometimes it's hard to navigate through all the clutter in the email. But with saying that, Mr. Sterling, thank you again for helping me get my email back online. And he pointed me to the folks over at Appalachia, and they contacted me right away, and they were very considerate, given my inability with computers. So they did good with trying to figure, help me figure out how to get things back on track. And then I would just want to remind the commissioners, and Mr. Sterling's been sending the dates out of some PSATC meetings coming up. One is the Fall Conference. There is another one, a one-day, or coming up in August, if any of the commissioners are available. The one in October is quite a ways away. It's in Erie this year. But you, I don't know if this is in any of the memos, but they are offering, PSAT is putting together some buses. So there's going to be some opportunities. If you don't want to drive, you can be on a bus with other first-class township commissioners on the way to Erie. So if you're planning on going. Other than that, thank you to all the staff and everybody for all the hard work that goes on in the township. We're also grateful for it. That's all, Madam President.
Thank you, Commissioner Brown.
Thank you.
Commissioner Brown?
I just wanted to say congratulations to Manager Davis on full-time status, and that's all I have tonight.
Okay, thank you. Vice President Nagy?
I would echo those sentiments, and then it means also, if you've been manager for six months, we've appreciated it. It also means that President Karen has been six months and appreciate everything you're doing, Mr. President. Thank you very much.
And I'll round out here. I just wanted to report that Manager Davis and I recently attended a municipal advisory meeting with the county commissioners. Manager Davis did an excellent job of reporting some of the hot topics within the township, so that was helpful. And we got to hear of other municipalities that are, you know, the issues that they're addressing, so that was helpful. Also wanted to bring to everyone's attention that the Committee for the one-hundred-and-seventy-fifth anniversary event, I'm going to say this from every meeting till then, because they've been working so hard on this event. But it is October fourth from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m., and we're very excited about it. So I just wanted to keep reminding everyone to come and support the event. And with that, I will turn to executive session items. I believe, Solicitor Minor, that there's no action coming from executive sessions, is that correct?
I have fifteen A and B, and there's no action required.
There's no action from my fifteen C either, Madam President.
So I will announce that we will be adjourning the meeting to executive session for three items, the first of which is the update on the Merits Properties LLC appeal. The second is an update on a right-to-know, oh my God, sorry, an update on the right-to-know law request appeal. And then the last is an update on a personnel matter. And with that, I will adjourn the meeting and wish everyone...